This is Tuesday, September 2nd. This is a Carney Board of Alderman meeting, call the meeting ordered. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. To the Republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and the
So I need you had a chance to take roll.
I have to enroll. Everyone is present. You have the form.
We'll move on to personal appearances. The first personal appearance this evening is a new employee introduction. I'll turn the floor over to Shelley Daniel.
Hi, I would like to introduce, we hired a new transportation superintendent, Kirk, if you'd please stand. Kirk Roberts is joining us. He is a previous Moda employee, has five years experience. He was also has worked for other places operating vehicles. And so I think he's bringing a lot of experience to our team and we're all excited to have him. He lives just over at Edgerton, so north of the river. He has a wife and two children, so we welcome to our team. Thank you.
We'll move on to the next item under personal appearances. This evening is my extreme honor to provide a proclamation this evening honoring Lyle Updike for his outstanding service to first responders in Carney, Missouri and the Kansas City metropolitan area. And before I read the proclamation, I do believe there's a couple individuals that would wish to say a few words this evening. Chief Thomas, would you mind to start us off?
Sure. Hi, Mayor Board. Everybody's doing great this evening, Lyle. Where's he at? Okay, there he is. You gotta make sure he's over here, so. I've known Lyle for a tremendous amount of time, since probably nineteen ninety or ninety-one or so. You know, he's done a lot of things for the community. He's also done a lot of things for myself and my family. And I really have never been able to thank him for that enough. You know, he's just been that guy that is such a huge supporter for law enforcement in general. He does, however, provide meals to firefighters and hose draggers and I won't hold that against him. That's okay. He does a great thing. He's constantly coming up and doing things for us at the police department. I really appreciate that. He represents our community in a fantastic fashion. And it's like I told him before, we not only hired his son's son-in-law as a police officer, Chris. There he is. You know, but I also told him that in addition to giving us Chris, he's got to bring us some cheesy corn in the process and welcome back any day, anytime. Thank you very much, Lyle. Congratulations.
Sheriff Bacon, I believe you wanted to say a few words.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you so much for allowing me the time to speak on behalf of Lyle. I wasn't able to make our proclamation of the Excalibur County's proclamation. I was out of state, but when I found out that he was getting a proclamation here, I was like, I can't miss this. Lyle and I have been working on serving first responders since twenty thirteen. Almost ten years. And I remember the first time I was asked to help Lyle out and organize it for the first responders in Clay County, I was like, I don't know anyone here. If you recall, I moved here in twenty thirteen. So from what I got to see, it really wasn't me doing anything. It was Lyle doing everything. He has a servant's heart. And every time we would serve an agency, whether it's fire, and you can't forget about ladder monkeys too, so. Gotta love our brothers and sisters in red. But you know, every time we would serve a fire department or a police department, he would always try to give credit to everyone else except him. And then I would always step in and say, no, Lyle, this is possible because of you. And so I just wanted to stand before you and the audience here, everyone attending that, Lyle, it was because of you that we grew from a handful of agencies to what you have grown it to today. Serving basically Platte County, Clay County, and I think some agencies in Jackson County. So I just wanted to say publicly, thank you, Lyle, for everything that you've done.
Thank you, Sheriff. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lyle, I'm going to read the proclamation we have prepared for you, and then if you would like to, we'll grab a photo opportunity. And then if you would like to say a few words, you will be able to after I present with your proclamation, sir. The proclamation reads, "A proclamation honoring Lyle Updike for outstanding service to first responders in Carney, Missouri and the Kansas City metropolitan area. Whereas the city of Carney and the surrounding Kansas City metropolitan area are fortunate to have a strong and courageous community of first responders who protect and serve with tireless dedication. And whereas Lyle Updike has demonstrated exceptional leadership and community spirit by organizing, cooking, delivering, and even serving meals as part of his annual first responders family appreciation barbecue, honoring these heroic individuals and whereas through his personal time, resources, and unrelenting commitment, Lyle has single-handedly grown this event into one of the largest first responder appreciation gatherings in the region. And whereas Lyle's unwavering support is further strengthened by his involvement of generous sponsors whom he has brought together to ensure the success and continued growth of his meaningful event. And whereas Lyle's passion, humility, and dedication serve as an inspiration to all and his efforts have positively impacted countless lives across the Carney community and beyond. Now therefore I, Randy Pogue, Mayor, on behalf of the city of Carney, Missouri, do hereby express our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Lyle Updike for his continued service, support, and championing of our first responders. Let it be known that his contributions are deeply valued, widely respected, and proudly recognized by the city of Carney and first responders. And witness whereof, I have heron two set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Carney, Missouri, the second day of September twenty twenty-five." Congratulations, Lyle.
So let's go Sheriff Bacon and the chief.
Liberty Hospital, too. All the air sponsors.
We'll get one after that. You want one with Sam too?
But one for people like these, I couldn't do it. So I appreciate very much making that happen. Those of you who know me from chamber meetings, a lot of our good friends, the director of the chamber, Mark says, be careful, don't ever give Lyle the microphone. So Randy, I'll try to keep it short. But this started, as Will had mentioned, with just a few people at our bar. We started it actually and it's been twelve years now.
Yeah.
It's been twelve. Liberty Hospital been with us since day one. And many other local communities. Randy's had several different banks involved, but he was always there to support us, and we appreciate that. I've got numerous sponsors from Carney, obviously. Liberty, and one from Cameron, the Excelsior, Platte City. So we basically cover the three county area. And to date, we've served over forty-two hundred meals past twelve years. I was slowed down a little bit over the last five years with prostate cancer, but I'm about to have that kick by now. Did have to have some major surgery in November, so I'm just getting back full speed. So I expect to top forty-five, forty-six hundred for this year. And Will, where's Will? I made him a promise when we hit five thousand that we'd do a primary dinner. We're gonna do that. But it would not be possible without these sponsors and my family. Everybody's here. I've learned a lot from my son Randall, from his barbecue contest. That's one thing to cook barbecue and that's another to cook it championship style. And of those forty-two hundred meals we've served, I've cooked every one of them, and I enjoy it. It's something that we have the equipment, we have the know-how, and obviously I must have had the time to do it, or I didn't have the time. So it is a real passion of mine to do this. Because, Mark, when I started this, I had just gotten tired and Will and your deputies here, Mark, I'd gotten tired of the news of seeing police officers shot and across the country while doing their job. And I decided that we don't treat them that way here in the Midwest. We treat them with respect for the jobs that they do. So that's why I keep going. And if my hell holds up, once you hit the five thousand, I'm still gonna keep going. Thanks to sponsors like the two that are here tonight, and I have many more. So with that, Alderman, Mr. Mayor, I appreciate this very much. And thank you for the recognition.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Lyle. Mr. Lyle, if you and your family would like to stay for the entire meeting, you're welcome to. But if you'd like to excuse yourself, now would be a good time to do so. I know Jim Smith's staying, right? Next item this evening is a proclamation expressing the city of Carney's appreciation to Peggy Gornfloh. Did I say it right, Peggy? All right. In Beacon Mental Health for their support to the Carney, Missouri Police Department's mental health and well-being. Chief Thomas?
Thank you, Mayor and Board. Peggy has been an amazing help for us. The state of Missouri passed a law about a year or two ago that said that all police officers are required to do a mental health check-in every three years. So we took that as a challenge, and we contacted John Stewart, our captain, was instrumental in getting this entire thing organized and on pace to get everyone through this process. So to get twenty-four employees through this signed-up schedule with all of our crazy schedules and workflow, it was a challenge. John did an amazing job with that. He worked with Peggy. She helped us find funding for it. Normally, these things cost about four hundred dollars apiece. And we got it for free. And I was the one of the first ones. John went first, I went second. And I can tell you, the hour that I spent with Peggy was probably one of the best hours I've spent in a long, long time, working and sitting down and talking to somebody who truly has a heart of service. And she does a fantastic job listening, mostly. And she helped our guys through some tough times. I can tell you that. She helped me kind of help, kind of arrange some things in my life, and I really, really appreciate it, Peggy. You're awesome, and you guys do a fantastic job. So I'll let you finish up, Mayor.
That's great. Thank you, Chief. I have a proclamation this evening, a proclamation expressing the city of Carney's appreciation to Peggy Gornfloh and Beacon Mental Health for their support to the city of Carney Police Department's mental health and well-being. Whereas the safety and mental well-being of all police officers serving the city of Carney are paramount importance and whereas the Missouri legislature now requires mental health wellness checkups for all post-certified police officers at least once every three years. And whereas the Carney Police Department in collaboration with Beacon Mental Health and Community Behavioral Health Liaison Manager Peggy Gornfloh implemented these mandated health, excuse me, implemented these mandated mental health checkups. And whereas the cost of such services often exceeds three hundred and fifty dollars per session, yet through the efforts of Peggy, twenty-four Carney police officers received their evaluations at zero cost to the city utilizing available public funding for mental health initiatives and whereas each post-certified officer completed their mental health awareness assessment with the guidance, professionalism, and compassion of Peggy Gornfloh, who has been a steadfast advocate for law enforcement. Now therefore I, Randy Pogue, Mayor, do hereby proclaim our sincere gratitude and appreciation to Peggy Gornfloh and Beacon Mental Health for their vital role in supporting the mental health and well-being of the Carney, Missouri Police Department. Peggy's dedication serves as an integral part of ensuring our officers remain healthy and resilient throughout their careers. And witness whereof, I have heron two set my hand and cause to be affixed the seal of the city of Carney, Missouri, on the second day of September twenty twenty-five. If I could present to you the original proclamation, we'll get a photo op and then I'll be happy to give you the podium if you have any shares.
Thank you, Beacon Mental Health, and my supervisor, who's our chief technical officer, Tanya Nelson. This very brief. I can honestly say Carney is so lucky. I know a lot of law enforcement officers in Clay, Platte, and Ray, and across the state, and what I ended my time with, with the Carney officers was, I want to move to Carney. Like, these guys, these guys and gals, truly, you guys really are lucky. I'm not just saying that. They really are incredible. You have incredible leadership. And Captain Stewart, who I've known for a very long time. And your Chief Thomas, who is wonderful, really great leadership, but truly incredible officers who are dedicated to this city. So I truly, it was, it was an honor for me, and it was something that I thoroughly enjoyed. So thank you for that opportunity to do that. So thank you.
Congratulations. And ladies, same with you. You are more than welcome to stay for the entirety of the meeting. And gentlemen, I'm sorry, young man, but you guys are, now would be a good time to get back to your families. Offer's open to you as well, sir. Welcome aboard. Yes, sir. Next item this evening is open public comments. Do we have any member of the community that would wish to address the board under open public comments this evening? We'll move on to consent agenda. Before I put a motion to the consent agenda, I would like to ask the board to move item four E to a discussion item after the consent agenda. If we could entertain a motion to move item four E to a discussion after the consent agenda? All in favor? Oppose? All right, item four E will be a discussion item after we consider the consent agenda. Are there any items of discussion or anything else on the consent agenda this evening? See none, if we can entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Make a motion to approve this agenda?
I'll second that.
All in favor? Oppose? Consent agenda passes. We'll next discuss item four E. Thank you, Board, for the support. I'll move that to a discussion item. I wanted to briefly just have a conversation with staff. I know at one point, we sold our, specifically our vehicles by sealed bid. Then we moved them to, we utilized a couple different auction companies, which I thought we received better results from selling our vehicles at auction compared to the sealed bid. So I just wanted to, I didn't see and hear really what direction we were moving forward with the surplus equipment. And then additionally, we have a resident, Chris Riley, who owns C B M Auctions, I believe is the name of the company, and he contacted me and reminded me that his auction firm does not charge the city sales premiums. So as, as a resident, a longtime business owner, he wanted to remind me that that is out there and available to us as well. So that's just why I wanted to remove the item from consent and have a discussion with staff real quick to see what our plan was to actually liquidate the, the equipment.
There are two different sections. If you turn to page fourteen of the agenda, the top section, there are three vehicles, three police vehicles, and those were planned to, well, Chief Thomas, we want to explain like what the plan was for.
Yes, but I'm not that familiar with the bidding, like with the auction houses and that sort of thing, or what sort of charges that they do, whether it's a I don't know, to be honest. And I thought if they are charging us anything, we can probably get it out there that we're selling these three vehicles and do it like we used to do it, where we parked them out by City Hall, put for sale signs on them, and just keep it simple. You know, as far as that goes, we'll have somebody there that will be able to show the vehicles if somebody wants to come and take a look at it, do it on sealed bids for X period of time, and, and just go forward in that regard. The two of them are not drivable. We'll have to probably have them towed up here. One head does not have a transmission and the other one, I can't remember what was wrong with it, but there's, there are three pretty long and toothy vehicles that we need to get rid of.
And then the other items, we're all going to go to auction.
Very well. That answers my questions. Does anybody else have any questions or items of discussion on this item? If we could entertain a simple motion to approve the simple motion to approve the sale and disposition of surplus city property by auction.
Motion to approve the sale and disposition of surplus city property by as stated.
All in favor? Thank you. We'll move on to ordinances. The first item this evening is a motion approving bill number thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-five presented by Eric Marshall, our parks director. An ordinance approving a park reservation agreement between the Carney R-one School District, a political subdivision in the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a color fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Mr. Mayor, as in years past, the school has come before us requesting permission to do a color run. And it has been granted in the past, and there's nothing different. They want to host their event on September seventh, excuse me, twenty-seventh, out of Jesse James Park.
Any questions from the board on their request? If you could read the proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a park reservation agreement between Carney R-one School District, a political subdivision, and the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a color fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail. I make a motion to approve.
All in favor? Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a park reservation agreement between Carney R-one School District, a political subdivision, and the city of Carney, Missouri, to host a color fun run on the Jesse James Park Trail.
Make a motion to approve on second reading?
We have a first from Alderman Holt, a second from Alderman King, if you can pull the board, please. I can. Oh, there we go.
Alderman Holt? Alderman Spencer? Alderman King? Alderman Lehman?
Vote is unanimous and ordinance passes on the second reading. Next item is a motion approving bill number thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-five presented by Stephanie Harris, our finance director. An ordinance amending section seven hundred, zero-three-zero billing, delinquent bills, disconnection of service subsections A and B of the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri. Stephanie?
Good evening, Mayor and Board. As we just continue to work through daily business related to the utility billing and payment of those utility billings, we've encountered instances where we felt a late fee waiver was warranted, but in review of our codes, it has not been allowed and is not provided for within our current code. So we are presenting this in order to resolve that issue and that's the question is all.
What would be an example?
One of the most frequent examples lately is we get returned bills to the city as undeliverable mail, even though the address is correct. And so customers at times aren't receiving their bill, and then by the time they realize that, a few days later, we've assessed the late fee and we have proof that they didn't get their bill. And most of these customers have good payment history. And so we we believe them that they're not receiving their bill and probably just have their late fee, but up until this point haven't had the ability to waive those late fees.
We've been having to pay the way you see?
They have it, yeah. They've been having to pay the fees. And there's other instances, like sometimes people who forget to update their credit card auto withdrawal information. We do credit card auto withdrawals on the tenth of the month, and we assess late fees on the twelfth of the month. And so if they've forgotten to update their auto withdrawal, they'll get that late fee, and then they'll notice, oh, I didn't update my, my auto withdrawal. And again, great payment history because they're on auto withdrawal. They just failed. And so this is a once every twelve-month rolling period, so we don't feel like it's too lenient, and it's probably just for those instances where somebody deserves probably to have their late fee waived. But we haven't been able to do it.
Sounds perfectly reasonable to me.
I just want to know, I think I found a Scrivener's error online, item section one B. I think, I believe it should say disconnection fee of fifty dollars, and it says free. So if we could just consider this ordinance with a correction of that Scrivener's error.
And it does not say that in the actual it really is, and that part's not getting changed. So hopefully, we don't even need to do anything.
Very well. If there's no other questions or items of discussion, if we could read the proposed ordinance on the first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending section seven hundred point zero-three-zero billing, delinquent bills, disconnection of service subsections A and B of the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri.
Make a motion to approve on first reading?
I'll second. All in favor? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance amending section seven hundred point zero-three-zero billing, delinquent bills, disconnection of service subsections A and B of the municipal code of ordinances of the city of Carney, Missouri.
Motion to approve.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Spencer? Alderman King? Alderman Lehman? Alderman Holt?
Ordinance passes unanimously. We'll move on to the next item. Motion approving bill number thirty-nine, twenty-twenty-five presented by David Pavlich, our community development director. An ordinance approving a right of An ordinance approving a right of way agreement with Bluebird Network LLC. David?
Yes, uh, so Bluebird is already a telecommunications provider in the city limits. They've been in the city for a while. They just, we didn't have an agreement with them. They existed since prior to the right of way use agreement ordinance that we have. And so it's to bring them into the fold. Um, that'll allow them to, you know, change facilities, move facilities, um, extend facilities. There's not a project to extend at this point in time, just to get them compliant with our.
That was my only question is what's Bluebird wanting to do in the community? We just got everybody out of our right of ways. Very well. If there's no other questions, if we can read the proposed uh, ordinance, first reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a rights of way use agreement with Bluebird Network LLC.
I make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving a rights of way use agreement with Bluebird Network LLC.
Make a motion on the second read.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved four to zero. Next item, motion approving bill number forty twenty twenty five presented by Shelley Daniel, our public works director. An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission cost of, uh, oh my goodness. What's that? Oh, cost of properment agreement for the construction of a pedestrian crossing at Lyons Park.
So on board, this ordinance authorizes the public works director until entering to a cost apportionment agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation uh, Commission. Um, this agreement will allow um, them to include the Lyons Park pedestrian crossing into MoDOT's plan, Route thirty three overlay contract, which is scheduled to occur in twenty twenty six. Um, under the terms of the agreement, the city will be solely responsible for all costs of the pedestrian improvement. We will still maintain um, bid concurrence to provide authorization after they open bids to ensure that's within our budgeted amount. As you remember, um, we brought um, forward a motion before to reject the um, pathways gaps and crossing project, which included multiple um, pedestrian improvements throughout the city. Um, the Lyons Park pedestrian crossing is the only remaining um, improvement that we haven't figured out how to get it under contract. So if, if this works where it goes in them though, that they'll have fulfilled all the improvements in that contract once we improve our teaching. So.
Very well. Any questions from the board on the proposed ordinance? Thank you for that report. Would you read the uh, proposed ordinance, first reading by title only, please?
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission cost apportionment agreement for the construction of a pedestrian crossing at Lyons Park.
Make a motion on the first reading.
My second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Second reading by title only, please.
An ordinance approving the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission cost apportionment agreement for the construction of a pedestrian crossing at Lyons Park.
Make a motion to approve on second read.
I'll second.
Pull the board, please.
Alderman Lehman.
Aye.
Alderman Holt.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman King.
Aye.
Vote is unanimous and ordinance is approved four to zero. We have no resolutions this evening. We'll move on to items for review and presentation. Uh, we'll start off with the July monthly financial report from our finance director.
Hey, um, July thirty first financials, that is a third of the way for our fiscal year. Um, again, looking through here, nothing uh, is, stands out. Um, there are things that are a little bit different than the thirty three percent. Again, most of them are related to timing, one-time expenses or um, transfers or like tax revenue that we don't expect till December or January, um, bond payments, you know, most of the things that that aren't right at that thirty three percent level are related to those types of things. So I don't know if you saw anything that you have questions about.
Any questions from the board on the financial report?
No.
All right. Thank you for your board.
Welcome.
Next item is a Narcan location presentation presented by Eric Marshall, our parks director. Eric?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, in your packet, you will see a letter from Lawrence from the um, Carney and Richmond Council requesting placement of a Narcan um, box, uh, preferably in a high traffic area. Um, we feel that um, the park might not be the best area to have that located. Uh, that would be in direct sunlight um, the entire day, but at the Carney and Richmond Council itself, uh, around the front of the building, we feel would be a better location. It's still in a high traffic public area. And I visited with uh, Ryan uh, pretty extensively on this and he was in agreement that um, a lot of uh, a lot of traffic is in that area. Um, but we feel uh, the front of the building would be a better location uh, where it's not in direct sunlight at all times. And we have no problem with that being installed at the Enrichment Council uh, towards the front of the building.
I think it's a amazing opportunity. Um, I've, I, I don't know if you're at Rotary the day the lady came, uh, Eric, I think you, I don't know if you were or were not, but um, a lady from North Kansas City Hospital um, was at Rotary and, and shared, she gave us all a couple little travel size Narcan. I have one in my car. Um, it, it, it blows my mind on, on how fast and effective Narcan is. Um, one thing I learned in that training with her is uh, that it, it, it's not like a, a fix. It's a temporary, you know, block of the drug for them to get to hospital and seek care. Um, it eventually wears off and that's when they start getting angry or combative. Um, but nonetheless, um, I, I, I think that this is a, a positive addition to the community. Any questions, uh, items of discussion from the board on this? Okay, are you just looking for a consensus, a simple motion from the board? What do you?
Maybe a motion just to allow us to give permission to Carney or Richmond consultants installing.
Very well. We can entertain a motion to approve the Narcan uh, disposal.
Dispensing box.
Dispensing box uh, located in front of our building at the Carney enrichment center.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion passes. Next item is the first quarter operational results presented by our department heads. So I don't uh, whoever would like to start off the presentation.
All right. So it looks like I get to start the presentation. Good evening, Mayor and Board. City Hall was hard at work uh, throughout the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty six. The departments listed under City Hall are legal, administrative services, human resources, communications, economic development, finance and I T, and all play a vital role in support of the operations of of the other city departments, ensuring that services run smoothly and efficiently across the organization. I want to quickly point out a few data points on this slide. Finance onboarded eleven new employees, issued five hundred and twenty one pay checks and one thousand ninety nine accounts payable checks. They issued eleven thousand five hundred and ninety utility bills with sixty seven million gallons of water sold. Forty-six new business licenses were issued and there were thirty-nine business license renewals. There were fifty-five delinquent water shut offs this quarter, which was significant increase from zero in the first quarter of fiscal year twenty twenty five because the shut off process had not yet been implemented. We are keeping Wyatt busy. Wyatt is our I T tech. He had a hundred and fifty-seven help tickets. City Hall invested fifty-one point seven five hours in professional education and training and charged thirty-five point eight seven hours of overtime, most of which was associated with moving the server room downstairs and getting Wyatt's uh, old workspace ready to be in office for two. We ended Q one with our operating expenses budget to actual twenty-three point nine percent. So moving on from the metrics, City Hall staff was busy uh, in Q one with a variety of different initiatives. New agreements were made with the Carney enrichment council. We welcomed two new positions which were board priorities, a communications specialist, Colleen Doctorian and H R manager Julie Dubinsky. Colleen's first communication initiatives have been revamping the flash update and adding video for social media content. She also has taken on the facilitation of our communications team. Looking forward, she's working on a website redesign and developing an easy way for residents to report profits. Julie's first H R initiatives, okay, now switching to H R from communications. Julie's first H R initiatives have been familiarizing herself with our culture and developing an onboarding process. She's also taken on the facilitation of our employee engagement team. And looking forward, she plans on fine tuning our onboarding process, reviewing various policies for update and getting to know each employee and their work environment. Immediate City Hall initiatives for the upcoming quarter include finalizing the board of Alderman's priorities for fiscal year twenty seven. Last month, as you know, department heads met with the board uh, for a priority setting session. And staff are preparing for the upcoming fiscal year twenty seven budget. So um, this quarter in economic development, the second K three fifty-three project was approved by the board of Alderman and that was the four point two million dollar uh, apartment project that's going in at thirty-three and East Lawrence. The board has approved another residential project, uh, but that will be counted, that will be counted towards uh, Q two. So economic development also works closely with the Carney Chamber in the Clay County Tourism and Colleen and I are working with both entities to make sure that Carney capitalizes on the World Cup twenty twenty six, which will be here before we know it. So and due to the World Cup twenty twenty six, we will be presenting a code update to the board for your consideration to allow for short-term rentals. It's estimated that the World Cup will bring over a half a million people to the Kansas City metropolitan area over the stretch of a two-month period. The matches are set for both June and July. We've already had several inquiries here at City Hall about people wanting to um, rent out their homes. So we'll be bringing that to you for your consideration in the future. Um, moving forward, uh, I continue to uh, attracting multifamily retail and industrial development and happy to say that we do have projects in the pipeline. I'm working on a development guidebook for developers. A development guidebook makes the process clear and consistent and helps developers understand what is expected and that helps them avoid delays. It shows the city's organized, transparent and ready to support investments. In the finance department, uh, they've been busy as usual. The biggest project in the first quarter was year end work for the fiscal year twenty twenty five and twenty twenty six audit. I had twenty twenty five written twice. Other than that, they've been documenting processes and procedures and continuing to improve reporting and reconciliation of financial data. Looking forward, the next big project for finance is they intend to tackle, they uh, intend to tackle working with all departments in the creation of a comprehensive fee schedule. So all departments are working on that together. And they plan to begin working with N P R on an initiative called We Tip. And that is a fraud prevention hotline. This is an anonymous tip line that city staff can utilize if they suspect fraud or any misuse of city funds. Moving on to the I T department, we've got a lot of departments in City Hall. Um, I T has been maintaining our certifications and keeping us in compliance and, and has plans to continue maintaining our system's security. Wyatt's top accomplishments for Q one, he installed fiber at P D and set up cloud backups, segmented I T networks and performed a camera system upgrade at P D. Coming up in the second quarter, Wyatt plans to finalize the server replacement at City Hall, get G-TAC, hope I said that right, body cams, set up uh, body cams and set up policy pers, policy procedures and replace the live scan system and replace all Windows ten computers before October first. So Wyatt's got his hands full with a lot of stuff. We do continue to hold our monthly engagement, employee engagement teams, our monthly communications teams. And uh, these teams are now, they're an integral part of building our culture and they're now led by professionals in each field. So happy to report that.
Great. Thank you for that report, Carolyn. Next.
Who is the court? Guess nobody's heard but me. Um, municipal court's been uh, very busy. Uh, Shannon has been here since November, so um, about half six months at this point. Well, getting closer to a year. Um, the metrics are uh, pretty much what stands out overtime, six point five nine hours, significant decrease over previous year. And five court sessions, their budget actual is at twenty-two and a half percent. Um, they have had three hundred and fifty-two cases that were pled guilty and sixty were dismissed. Um, probably um, I didn't get some of the statistics, but I think I can remember Shannon reported at the uh, meeting that we all had for our overall team that uh, warrants were up two thousand percent since this time last year. So significant um, change in the processing of old cases. Um, she's been working really hard on getting old cases cleared and working the new cases. So just significant work is being done there. Um, thirty thousand dollar or almost thirty-one thousand in fines total. And it's probably the most significant points. Let me ask.
Thank you.
We development, David Pavlich here on behalf of the Development Department. Um, didn't happen in the first quarter, it was more the second quarter, but it was the very, like the very first day. We were able to hire Kevin Kirk as a new building inspector. Uh, I'll report that the next time we report, but I was excited about it. We, we appreciate having him here. He's, he's been a good asset to our department. So the previous quarter, we issued sixty-seven building permits worth seven point six million dollars in investment. Fifty-six of those permits were residential in nature, including nine new single-family houses. Leaves a lot of the extra permits, a lot of those were other permits. Um, we saw a lot of solar panel installations and roof. There's been a lot of roof work. I don't know if you've seen Roof Companies Out, but they're in full force.
I think we'll see phase eight at the Meadows and the second phase they know is landing, probably hit vertical.
Yeah.
I think.
Yeah, yeah. Um, and then um, of the, on the commercial side, so um, one of the permits on the commercial, there were only seven per, uh, eight permits, but uh, the pre-Jew building in Innovation Business Park adds twenty-five thousand square feet of space in the business park. Precision chiropractic will move out there. Most of the building will be indoor training and uh, uh, it's the word uh, rehab, training and rehab facility. We also performed three hundred and seventy-two inspections during the period, which is seventy-seven percent more than the previous year, uh, the, the quarter of the previous year. Code compliance, uh, official responded to a hundred and fifty-three nuisance go complaints, which is four times as many as this time last year. And we issued a hundred and seventy-one dog licenses, which again is also four times as much as we did last year. Uh, people really have got the message out and she was talking that we may hit four hundred dog licenses here, uh, probably last week. So uh, people are, are doing the things that they need to keep our community safe with the uh, shots and vaccinations. We processed nine submittals for planning zoning commission for their consideration, which included the amended plan for the comms apartments. That was a K three fifty-three project. Um, they had a twenty-four unit apartment building there, cycling for Les Schwab Tire Center along Watson Drive. And we're expecting a building permit application to come in on that project very soon. Um, and then the Cottonwood Creek Fifth Plan Development Plan, uh, proposing twenty-two single-family lots. Um, but that final plat is in process too. And so before the end of Um but that final plat is in process too. And so before the end of the year, we'll see construction out there uh at that project as well. Thank you.
Okay, sir.
Mayor and Board of Alderman, Mark Thomas, Chief of Police here in town. Uh there's some things that we did really, really well last quarter and I wanted to bring those up. There's some things we need to improve on. Um and uh but I have a bit of an explanation on that as well. Uh our calls for service were one thousand seven hundred and two calls. Uh we had about a little over a thousand traffic stops. Uh our officers made a hundred and one arrests and we took fifteen crash reports. Uh our training hours are two hundred and seventy three point five hours, pardon me, in one quarter. Uh the reason we did that is because we ran out of training money the last quarter at the end of the year, fiscal year. And so we stacked that training up and we were ready to rock and roll on the first day of the quarter. Uh because of that, we had extra overtime. Uh we had about twice what we had the previous quarter last year. Um with with uh extra training comes extra overtime. Uh we we have to do that in order to cover our shifts uh when we do that. Um and the. We've got a lot of uh training under our belt this first quarter. Um our communications team at the police department made fifty three Facebook posts. And I think they're a a sign of uh uh success. We're getting really good uh feedback from the public. Uh and uh with informational posts as well as uh some of the things that we've uh made in terms of critical incidents. Uh we have, we've done eighteen community relations presentations. Um and uh one of my favorite uh statistics is that our average response time is still under four minutes. Uh that's that's a, that's really good, by the way. Um I don't know that there's another uh. Uh department in the area that can boast of those short numbers. And it's because uh we're out there in the field, um we're we're able to make uh. Quick calls like you just saw earlier in the meeting, those guys running when that two tone comes out, you you head in the car. Um that's that's part of it. Uh our detective unit had fifty six assigned cases and seven charges were filed. Uh we continued working on thirty six active cases and thirteen uh inactive cases. Uh some of the casework that we did, uh our summer months are always busy in law enforcement. That's just again, uh. This summer was no exception. We do have uh uh. Two new officers you all have recently met, and that's Chris Allard and Isaac Heidi. And these two officers were were well trained prior to coming here and. We're really happy to have them and I'm really happy to say that we have all three of our new officers out on their own right now. Uh and so they're finished with their F T L program, uh everybody's out on their own and uh and. Um our canine habit turned two years old in June. Uh I'm sure you enjoyed more than one cup cup, I'm guessing, uh that day. Uh so. Uh we've been able to get all of the cars that we purchased last year outfitted and and road ready and assigned to our officers. It was one canine vehicle, a detective vehicle, and two cars for the road. Um our firearms trainers who used to be Detective Westernfield and Taylor. Now we have uh Officer uh Allard and. Uh Heidi, who were both firearms instructors to begin with. So we now have four firearms instructors, which is amazing. Uh the the good part about that is when we train, we're doing it much more tactically uh in in mind. And we're able to have an officer over the shoulder of two guys at a time and they can kind of keep them safe. Give them hints and 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 that sort of thing. It's a really great scenario for training. Um I also challenged our officers, Sergeant Hager and Corporal Taylor, to put forth the our own D W I refresher school. Class for every officer on the police department. Uh and they 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 did a stellar job on that. They put a four hour class together. Um and each of our officers have has had additional training, updated training on on uh. S F S Ts. We're gonna ask them what that stands for and I can't remember. But it's what you do for field training, uh and uh not field training, but for uh sobriety testing. Um and so they went over some case law and and uh. Uh got everybody a little bit more comfortable with doing that sort of work. Uh if you don't do it very often. Sometimes you forget what you're what you need to be doing correctly. Um so they did a great job on that. Uh we had a number of different uh. Notable cases. I'm not going to go through all of them because there was a lot. Uh there were several cases where we were involved in a car chase and we were able to employ the new Valentine's law. Which is a felony if you if you flee from the police during uh and and display certain careless and imprudent uh driving techniques. Uh we had some in custody cases that we that we made uh responded on. Um arrested a guy that had had a active felony warrant for over eighteen years. And it was just from a call from the citizen that thought this guy looked um. Out of place. Um and he did. Uh they thought that he was breaking into the house that was under construction. Uh it was on a Sunday afternoon. Typically not a great popular time for construction activities. Uh they made the contact with the guy, wanted to find out he he'd had a warrant for I think over eighteen years. Uh detectives Westernfield Nelson solved some vandalism that was done at the park. Uh help help in large part to the Parks Department and some tips from the public. So they did a great job on that as well.
Chief, I could ask one question. How many? Do you have any vacancies at the police department?
We do not. We have a part time vacancy, but we're doing a background on that person. Uh we do not have any police officer vacancies, but I don't say that very loud.
I was at a. Liberty Surtoma meeting last week and uh. There was a leader of another law enforcement agency there presenting and and he shared statistics from. Northtown, Smithville, and Liberty, I guess, are down like fifty percent collectively, like each department. And so that's a a true testament to to yourself, your your command staff and your officers. So.
Thank you very much, Mayor. We work hard at it. Um you know, and it's um. Yeah. The guys know where I stand and I take it very seriously. So it's it's a point of pride for us and as a city. And as an apartment truly, um those other mayors don't like to, uh those other police chiefs that I meet with. They they like, yeah, we don't want to hear it because I think Liberty's fourteen down and I think Smithville's doing better, but. Think about how long it takes to get a police officer trained. It's it's a, if you put them through the academy, it's a six month academy. And then it's another three or four months as an F T O. And not to mention the money it takes to 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 hire them, you know, to get them hired. Um it's a long process. Um and I'm I'm so happy that our our overtime hours, by the way, are going to be going down because we have. Full staff now and we're not going to have to be covering for people's shifts all the time. That's really hard. Um so now we're we're kind of proud of the fact that we're full staff. Thank you for that.
Absolutely. All right, H R report.
Eric Marshall, Director of Parks, um just like to tell you that we have three full time staff. Ryan Marcot, Ray Kendall and myself. We also have a. Part time uh employee, Jeff Anderson. He is eleven thousand hours um per uh budget year. And we'll have Jeff through the fall and then um hopefully again uh in February and March when our spring season um preparation starts. We were also given three seasonal employees, Elijah Kennedy, who started in May and he worked May and June. And then after college was out, Canton Woods and Kale Davis also, uh he's in high school. They split, uh we flew the three of them, a thousand hours. And just to update, Canton and Kale's last day was August fifteen. Uh many hours mowing, weed eating and such is shown on the on the screen. But this year, thankfully, we were uh we were able to cut down on the actual hours of mowing. Uh we were way more efficient this year as all of our employees and prior knowledge since they've been back two and three years, which is. A great thing for us. Um we're really proud this year. We cut out um a lot of contract mowing from the previous years in both Lyons. And um Mac Porter Park. But yet we were still able to cut twenty five total hours of mowing. Naturally, because of the experience the guys had, they know what they do, they knew where to go and things of that nature. So. Um cutting and removing of trees was way down this quarter from the first quarter of twenty five from one hundred and thirty five to forty four trees trimmed and removed. And that's a good thing because we didn't have the spring storms. Um like we had last year where uh we spent an exorbitant amount of time cutting down trees. Like to tell you that the number of trash and trash barrels were dumped from Lyons Park, Mac Porter and Jesse James Park was high, six hundred and ninety five in a three month period. Uh as I stated, this is a lot of trash and we continue to dump our pet waste stations along the trails once a week. Uh Ray Kendall, he's our certified playground um safety inspector. Uh completed six playground inspections in the first quarter. And earlier this spring, our insurance carrier um conducted a walkthrough audit with both Ray and myself. And noted that everything was in compliance and things of that nature, which is a great thing. We spent over two hundred and fifty hours to prepare our fields and uh and parks for leagues. Uh such as dragging the ball fields, chalking, spraying, uh spray painting with soccer fields. And of course, a lot of hours chemical spraying uh for the dandy lions and broadleaf. Um about our leagues, we had a successful spring, uh barring the rainouts. We had quite a few rainouts, but we ended up getting those made up. Our youth participants were five hundred and fifty eight this quarter. Our spring pickleball league had three hundred and ninety four adult participants for a total of nine hundred and fifty two. And that is an increase from twenty one from last year. We still ran our pork shelters. Uh Lyons Park had fifty one of the sixty three shelters reserved. The Splash Park opened Memorial Day weekends. We had five weeks of shelter rentals in the first quarter, mainly those are on Saturdays and Sundays. However. Uh we really like this at a lot of uh out of town um schools. Um especially Excelsior, Liberty, uh and so on, come and visit our splash parks uh during the week, which is is fabulous. Um our our sixty three shelter rentals are exactly one more uh than we had last year. Community events in the first quarter, uh as we were just getting started in the warmer weather. Uh we had two concerts at the amphitheater, the Hall and Oates Concert on June thirteenth and the Live eighty eight point five Christian Concert was on June twenty first. Uh we had just started our Flicks and Food Truck Fridays, uh which movies in the park, and that was held on June twenty seventh, showing Mufasa, the uh The Lion King. Our capital projects, we were able to purchase an additional six sets of of official soccer goals. And installed the dechlorination system and riprap in Lyons Park to uh comply with V N R regulations. And a couple of biggies, the Jesse James Park received uh its new double web liner, which was eighteen years old, the original one. And we also added a new Mary Bill right now. So that's what I have.
I remember that playground being built. It's hard to believe that that was eighteen years old.
Eighteen and we opened the. Yep, yep. When we got it, it was the largest.
Remember that?
Thank you for that report.
Sure. Well, that. Um Marcos Barbosa is our cemetery sexton. Um he spent a hundred and nine hours on cemetery cleanup. Um there were, there has been a lot of trees trimmed and things of that nature and and when we did have a few storms, um. Uh we got that. One thing that he is doing is really um. Overlooking the gray sites and getting rid of some of the unsightly bushes and things of that and and getting that tidied up so it looks much better. Um seventeen graves were sold, fourteen of those were marked. Um we did spend a lot of time resetting and fixing some headstones. Um a couple of the big ones, we had to get some pretty heavy equipment out there. Um and dug them up and uh reset them and they all look nice. And this quarter, um we expect a lot more than that amount because Marcos has been telling me.
There's a large one that's, pardon me, there's a larger one. It's like five foot tall and it's like really.
Yeah, that's gonna take uh some some work, but sure, we're gonna try and get that accomplished. Um he was out there eighty three uh trips to the cemetery and I don't. I don't get it, but there's a lot of trash out at the cemetery and he's been uh doing his best to keep that clean as well. Um and his budget to actual is twenty five point seven percent.
He's doing a wonderful job out there. I can, when I'm out there, I I notice the difference. Yeah.
And I add the little veteran recognition. He had talked about, I don't remember the numbers, but he's done research on people that are buried there and I want to say three times as many veterans. The B F W now knows of three times as many more veterans in our cemetery than they do before.
Yeah, I think initially he had eighty three documented veterans. Through his research, um the records that we had in our system. And working with V F W, et cetera, he has like two hundred and forty or something.
That's amazing. And I love how you, there's now a database where you can go and search for a loved one or some or somebody you care that, you know. Uh he's doing great, him and Jamie both on that project.
Yeah.
Thanks.
All right, good evening. I'm Shelley Daniel, Director for Public Work Inspector. Um first, uh we delivered or removed a hundred and twenty one solid waste containers. Our G I S database had twenty nine thousand seventy eight new data points mapped. And we saw twenty six thousand one hundred and four mountains. During quarter one, we managed twenty four contracts, issued six driveway permits. And inspected infrastructure for several private developments. We completed two construction projects. The twenty twenty five street maintenance project and the water plant basin painting project. We have two active ongoing construction projects. Including the new water power project along Watson Drive that is expected to be operational by the end of the year. The Basin Five Inflow Infiltration Reduction Project involves the cleaning, inspection. Lining and replacement of pipes and manholes in the downtown Carney area. Inflow and infiltration is also called I N I. Is excess rainwater and groundwater that enters the sanitary sewer system, which can overwhelm the system's capacity. We need to sewer overflows and increase treatment costs. This project is vital as a recent three point inch rain event caused. Flow to surge from point eight three million gallons a day to two point two million gallons a day. The other twenty contracts are for inspection, design and planning services. The board accepted six grants valued over seven million dollars in Q one, quarter one. Most significantly was for our nineteenth street complete street project. And the final pathway project for the last three sidewalks to be constructed along Regency Drive, Route ninety two and Route thirty three. Our budget to actual for quarter one was twenty three point seven percent. And our team completed a hundred and nine point five training hours and remains fully staffed. Looking ahead, we kicked off the wastewater treatment plant facility plant. The rate study for the water and sewer rates. We plan to finish the design for the Clark Street waterline replacement. We're gonna begin the process of updating our infrastructure codes. And the construction of the Pathway Scouts project in the Stone Lake, Stonecrest and Jane Point neighborhoods. Next. I didn't know the order or something. Water Department, for the Water Department, we ran the treatment plant for six hundred and thirty two hours, which was about half the time that ran the same quarter last year. We treated twenty five point four million gallons of water and purchased seventy four point four million gallons from Kansas City, Missouri, which was forty seven million gallons. More than last year in quarter one. This was due to a vacancy, but mostly due to the plant being shut down for about a month for the water base, water plant basin painting project. We performed four thousand seven hundred and fifty three treatment tests and seventy three distribution tests. We had five water main breaks, operated ninety valves, flush ninety five fire hydrants, and we also replaced twenty four water meters. Installed ten water meters for new construction and performed fifty five shuttle for delinquent payments. We responded to a one thousand one hundred and sixty seven utility location. We responded to a one thousand one hundred and sixty-seven utility locates. A significant increase from the five hundred and twenty-four in the same quarter last year. The department is currently at sixteen point nine percent of its budget to actual and we remain fully staffed. Waste water, the wastewater department, we treated ninety-two million gallons of wastewater through the plant and U V system with an average flow of one point oh two million gallons. Putting the plant at ninety-one percent capacity. We pro, we processed two hundred and thirteen dry tons of sledge, performed twenty-six lint inspections and completed ninety lift station inspections with only four pump clogs. We also ran eight hundred and forty-six tests. We purch, purchased a mower and trailer and are now taking care of um, the, the grounds around the wastewater treatment facility and all the lift stations. Our overtime wishes seven hours and major decrease from last year um last time last quarter due to um having our team fully staffed during first quarter. Um, we do have a vacancy now that we will be focused on filling um this quarter. Uh, we did do forty-two point five hours of training with a focus on um getting all our employees um licensed as operators or increasing their licenses. Our budget to actual was thirteen point nine percent. Our transportation department. Lastly, moving on to transportation, our staff completed three tons of asphalt for pot hole patching and contracted five point four miles of overlays. We completed forty-eight hours of street sweeping and seventy-six hours of roadway beautification, which includes maintaining roadside banners, flags and holiday decorations. We completed ten linear feet of ditching and four hundred and seventy hours of mowing, which was up from last year due to the um reducing the amount of money we're spending for contract mowing. Our team replaced three hundred and forty linear feet of sidewalk and a hundred and seventy-nine linear feet of curb and gutter focusing on the streets that were just recently overwashed. We also spent twelve hours responding to weather events and completed eighty-six hours of storm pipe cleaning. Our budget to actual was thirteen point two percent with no overtime or training hours. Our crew remained short-staffed, but with the help of our seasonal workers and our utility and streets director, we remain very productive. The next quarter, we will continue our sidewalk and replacement work, replace the filling pipe on South River Parkway and continue to fill the two vacancies our, on our team. And we will begin, begin training our new transportation superintendent.
So I, I think uh, a common theme I'm hearing, uh, and, and this is obviously some sincere appreciation to the department and to their staff, uh, but I, I love hearing the discontinuing of contracts work and, and doing more things in-house. Uh, no offense, we've got a, a lot of good uh vendors and, and companies that we've utilized for many years, but anytime we can do work in-house, it's typically at a, a, a lower cost to taxpayers. Um, so I, I appreciate hearing that, that tone and, and I mean, another busy quarter for the city of Carney. So thank you to our department heads and to all your staff. And I, I look forward to, to hearing the results uh for, for our next quarter. Thank you. I have no communications this evening. We'll move on to city administrators' reports.
The only thing I have is just a reminder that our next regular board meeting will be on Monday, September fifteenth, right here at six thirty P M.
We'll move on to alderman discussion. Alderman Lehman?
I have nothing.
All right, Alderman Spencer?
Nothing.
Alderman Holt?
Nothing.
And Alderman King?
I don't have any.
That concludes alderman discussion. We do have an executive session noticed up this evening, a closed session per R S M O six ten O two one. Uh, pursuant to R S M O six ten O two one subsection one for legal actions or litigation involving a public governmental body in any confidential or privileged communication between a public governmental body or its representatives and its attorneys. And R S M O six ten O two one subsection two leasing, purchasing or sale of real estate by a public governmental body where public knowledge of the transaction might adversely affect the legal consideration there for. And R S M O six ten O two one subsection twelve to discuss matters pertaining to negotiated contracts. And a reminder that our meeting will be adjourned from there. So this does conclude our open public portion of the meeting. And if we can consider a motion to go into executive session.
You'll make that motion? One second.
We'll call, please.
Alderman Holt?
Hi.
Alderman Spencer?
Hi.
Alderman King?
Hi.
Alderman Lehman?
Hi.